I would like to call the meeting to order at 5:07 PM. If everyone can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I would like to thank everyone for coming and welcome everyone. And first thing we need to do is to preview the meeting's agenda.
I'm going to preview the agenda.
The second thing. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say name. Motion carries. All right, 5.0 is community comments. Community comments is an opportunity for the public to address a school board on a school-related item in accordance with the guidelines that are printed at the end of the agenda. The agendas can be found on the table over there. We don't have any community comments, but I would like to acknowledge our superintendent. So I don't know if everyone has heard about this, but Dr. Crandall was recognized by the Minnesota Association of School Administrators, MASA, as an Administrator of Excellence. And so there's nine different regions, and Region 7 is Dr. Crandall from Lake Superior and Cook County School District. Yes. Congratulations. Anything else you'd like to say about that?
I was very surprised that I received that. I have a phone call from our, in our region, we have a person who's gone as our region rep and also called me about two weeks or three weeks before the spring conference and let me know that I was receiving the award. And I said, oh, I guess I'm going to the conference. Yeah, and it's an award that your peers select.
Yeah, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes. All right, and so then 6.0 is student highlights. And so 6.1 is the ICE 3054 ICE Storm Robotics Team. And we did, no, the camera didn't see that, but we did get a nice, very nice demonstration before the meeting from the team. We met many of the team members and the adult helpers with that, and so they had their competition. Mr. Nelson, did you want to say anything else about the team?
We will, just so the board knows. Talking to one of the mentors and he took some videos, so he'll be sharing that with our folks who can hopefully either get it up on our webpage or somewhere, some way, shape, or form out there so folks can see it, our team in action.
Well, basically, if people can share. All right, and 6.2 is ski team.
We had a little, Coach Lamb and I had a little, we thought each other was getting the ski team.
Oh.
And there was some missing for spring break.
Yeah.
And so Coach Lamb and I are in negotiations whether we're going to come back for the next meeting or how we're going to recognize them, but it wasn't an intentional slate of the ski team, I think. Coach Lamb thought I was going to bring him in after we had talked before he had left on his vacation. I thought he was going to bring them, so.
They'd be nice.
We'll make sure they get recognized.
Nice for the team to come and present the board with the trophy.
We wanted them to bring the trophy.
Yes. That would, they would like to do that.
And where does that trophy reside then?
Right now, it's the most current trophy, and so the most current trophy will, as you come in past the office, there's a little window in the hallway and we have that displayed. And then like, let's say another team gets their trophy, then that's when we take that trophy and transfer it into the athletic showcase and then we put the newest trophy in the office.
So our team, however, is not just Cook County students, correct?
This year is just Cook County students.
No, we've got, we've got one from Silver Bay.
Yep.
Because our team is Cook County Silver Bay team. And so sometimes we have Silver Bay students on there, sometimes we don't.
No, I understand, so why wouldn't the trophy sometimes be in Silver Bay?
The co-op is, we are the, we are the primary schools of cooperative, and that's generally where those things will see.
It wasn't a North Shore storm, for example, of our cross-country running team to the state or something, we received a trophy. That would be, that's really a cooperative where it would, it should be shared between the two. But this is just an opportunity for students in Silver Bay to ski. It's the Cook County Ski Team.
So on that, if the, our cooperative team, if we, if got a trophy, where would that trophy go?
For the cooperative, it would be shared between the two sides.
Yeah, get it for six months.
That would be something that Mr. Dorr, as the Activities Director, would work out with their activities trophy. Or we, see if we can get another one.
To be honest with you, what would happen if we had a cooperative with kind of that 50-50 split, we would definitely just order another award to the high school league. Both schools would have a copy of that. That's what we'd have to do.
Okay, thanks. Why didn't one of us to email hog?
Figured they were like cast in gold or something, so there could only be one, but...
And maybe it's going to be part of your report, but I do want to wish good luck to the Knowledge Bowl. That's going to be heading to state, and so I don't know if, we did get an email on it, but good luck for those students that are going for state. I don't know what state is, so maybe we'll hear how they did.
First or second.
Okay.
Right after the break.
Oh, they did.
Ten to eleven.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, ten to eleven. Probably know.
All right, 7.0 is the consent agenda. Is there anything from the consent agenda that somebody would like both of them have a discussion? If not, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I will second that.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say name. Motion carries. All right, 8.0 is discussion action items.
If we could move that until Ms. Burnett is running late. She is expected to arrive, so when she arrives, we can bring that up, if that's okay to the board.
Yes, sounds good. 8.2 is goals report.
The goals here. All right, so, and we'll be hearing about it during one of the reports, but the, for our culture for our building, the diversity event took place. And that went off well. You'll hear more about that, but overall, it went quite well for the district. Looking for my report.
There it is.
Just hand it down, just give that back to you. So the common ground and seeds of change went well. We got some pictures as well that are, should be up on the website. And other steps will be to be planning for next year, get that rolling again. ALICE training is being set up. It looks like the ALICE training we're going to look at at the beginning of next year.
What is ALICE training?
So ALICE training is, I don't know what the acronym stands for, but it is a, you know about, because we've talked about lockdown drills, fire drills and such. ALICE training is, that's kind of our first plan. ALICE training is like Plan B. So if we find out Mr. Dorr, Ms. Myers say, you know, we have an intruder in our building in the industrial arts section of the building, what ALICE training provides is, if I'm sitting down here in the elementary wing, get the kids out. You know, what is your plan of action? If you know there's an intruder in the building, the other part of it would be, say, for example, it's in this room, how are we going to block these doors? What are we going to do to blockade the doors? A little different mentality as far as, you know, fight or flight. But if we're going to block the doors, if I'm in the kindergarten room, who's doing that blocking the doors? You know, you just have one adult in there. And so how do you manage kids at the younger level? Then you have the secondary level where some of those kids, you know, they're going to, okay, kids, let's find something, you know, okay, I can throw this at somebody. You know, what do you have at hand that you're disposed to use to counteract any intruder? So that's really what ALICE training is about, giving you alternative plans as far as what to do to, for the safety of the kids in everybody in the building.
Is that training for everyone or just for the teachers or?
It's for the others.
It's just distressing to think that we need to tell her, we would have to tell her children to throw books and whatever. I, it, it's just...
It's very unnerving, unfortunately, and unfortunately, it's the reality. And so, yeah, and I think, and you know, law enforcement does come in and they do, you know, they're shooting in here, you know, and I don't know if the teachers will be here for that, but they shoot like salt pellets at each other and somebody's the bad guy and the other people, and they're screaming, and they, you know, to get good at this, you have to have it as real as possible. And so it's a very intense thing that happens. Not saying the teachers are going to be part of that part of it, but it's a very, unfortunately, with our very long hallways, it's a really good training to have.
And I've been through part of it. We did a scenario where we had somebody stand, say, for example, somebody was at this door with their keys. And we had somebody stand at the entrance to the ACA, and we said, go. And the person came through the entrance, the ACA, they were on top of the person before they got the keys into the door. You know, so we're just showing you reality. This is, this is reality. And what are you going to do if something comes in the building? How are you going to react?
And it's really to practice that thinking for the teachers, for anybody that's in the building to practice the thinking, look for maybe some areas where we need to improve, make those improvements. Something nice about our building is that we have those lock blocks in. So when he talks about having to fumble for keys, when that adrenaline's going, it takes you a lot longer than you think. With the lock blocks, we can just do a little quick swipe and those doors are locked immediately. And I, that is a really nice safety feature that our school has. I think it's also really nice that we have locked doors around the entire building. We have one entrance that people think it buzzed in, you know, so that's all part of it. But it's really to guide that thinking, and once you've thought about it once, your brain will remember it, and hopefully, it'll automatically go there if there was ever a situation like
Yeah, so that's coming up. Looking at the academic achievement for all students, registration process is in full swing. They're going to be, and I say they, we're talking about Ms. Myers and Mr. Dorr to be working on setting up those schedules for next year already. Ms. Myers is working on our ADSIS program, which is Alternative Delivery System, inter-
Intervention.
Alternative, it's an intervention system. It is a, too many acronyms.
Alternative Delivery and Specialized Instructional Services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is, it is a preventative program, preventing students entering the special needs. And so it's an intervention system, working on, we have that program, we've had it for the last, you know, this is year two. We have to reapply it for two years, and so we're in the process of doing that. And then we have an improvement plan, Mr. Dorr's working on with the, he'll be working with the school staff to develop that. And then managing the school district resources, we have our long-term facility maintenance planning, and we have started that process. That's LTFM funds, you may have heard that acronym as well. And so that's looking at flooring, lighting, painting, things, a lot of those things we have been taking care of through our bond, but this is another, this is the funding stream that all districts have. If there's a health and safety type, I'd say, for example, asbestos, which we know we have in some of our areas, it would come through this funding stream. The others, you're going to be seeing revised current year budget, and that's tonight, so we'll be looking at that. And then Ms. Backman and myself, along with the administrative team, we're looking at FY '20 budget process as well.
So is there an opportunity annually that you review these goals?
Yes, we, I thought we mentioned it, maybe we didn't, but we'll look at it this summer.
We did, but you didn't in the summer?
We will review these this summer, July.
And does strategic planning, you're revisiting those goals, how's that tied to the budget process or does it?
Well, this was just, we, this goal came about because of the fact that we have a specific goal for our finances. So that was, at that point in time, when that goal was set, the focus, one of the priorities was to get our budget under control.
Sure, that's a great goal.
To build our fund balance.
And the reason I'm wondering about that, depending on your goals, you might, I'd shift the way you spend on programs or whatever, depending on what your academic goals are, you might put budget in different areas. That's why I was just wondering.
Right, yeah, so we may have a goal specific to, you know, increase our math skills. So we may look at our budget goals, staff development, specific in the area of math.
Good.
That would be, some of the things we're going to be looking at this summer for sure. And so that's the goals report.
Okay. And I see Maria is here, and so I will go to 8.1, American Indian Education Update. And I just wanted to mention, you know, we haven't had a meeting since Norman Deschamps passed away. And so on, you know, behalf of the board and things, you know, obviously, we want to express our condolences to the Grand Portage community, and so I, you know, we haven't met because of meeting times and everything, so I just wanted to say that from, from the district and things, so.
I know a lot of the district employees and teachers were in attendance, so this is annual compliance documentation that Grand Portage does for the state funding that we receive. So the board, LIC, did vote a, vote a concurrence, we did that on March 6th, and gave the district a yes. And I'm presenting it to you today because the state requires that I present it to you and I need to have Sissy's signature. Dr. Crandall, Stacy Spire, Chairperson for the LIC Committee, has already signed it, and she does the resolution. This is for, Dr. Crandall has to sign, and you guys will get copies of this, you'll also get a copy of this, which Stacy says that she did do, we did do a vote of concurrence, so you are concurrent, so we don't have to worry about this again until next March. And then we have to do another one for the Impact Aid that Lori and Dr. Crandall and I will work on. So I will submit that to the state tomorrow, upload it, submit it. Once I do that, I will forward you a copy, forward Lori a copy of the school board if they would also like to have a copy of that. And I do know that our next meeting is April 3rd for the LIC, and there's also the 25th of April that you agreed to, the school board committee to come up to Portage. Just wanted to say that we are working in a good direction, and Dr. Crandall already has the, some of the questions to be prepared before you come up when you meet with the Grand Portage community.
On April 25th?
Yeah, April 25th at 5:00 PM.
At the log building.
At the log building again.
And it will be in the mocassin telegraph, Grand Portage paper, and then there'll also be flyers that I'll print up and put down there.
And a real pop-up again?
Yes.
And this is just, this is just going to be very informal.
Yeah.
So, you know, yeah, the LIC, if they, you know, informal, however they want to run it, I'm going to be...
Community members will be coming through, they're looking for, we were talking about the summer slide, I was also talking about that with Sam and Brad, so, and also with Sharon, so we were thinking about ideas for the summer to keep the kids on track and kind of like, close the achievement gap score, so. You've been working on it.
I have a question for you, Maria.
Yes?
I've heard that the commissioner is coming to all of the reservations. Have they set a date in Grand Portage?
Which commission, Dr.?
MDE.
Oh, the MDE, oh, you're talking, oh, I thought you were talking about the Director of Indian Ed, Dr. Harstead. No, okay, she is, who is that?
Is it, her name is?
No, she was last year's.
She's last year. Okay. Her name, my name just went out of my head. I wonder if she could come in one of those days, like the 25th, so that she could meet our school board as well.
Sure, if, if, I haven't had an email about that yet. I've just, I know next week I go down to the cities for tribal consultations, but I have not heard that the Commissioner of Education is coming up. So that's a...
But that might be a date where she could come and visit and meet our school board.
I will definitely shoot Dr. Harstead an email and ask her when it's, oh, no, 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 I just, I...
That might be a really great date for her to visit and us to visit and talk about some of those things.
That would be, that would be a good date, so.
And I will apologize if I'm not good. Thank you, Maria. Thank you for the great...
Yes, half and ricker, that's her name, that's right. Ricker, she is a new one. I was getting ready to say man again, but that's you.
Well, thank you, Maria. We're, obviously, we're very happy to get the concurrence statement from...
It's kind of wild.
And so we did last year also, this is the second year in a row, and so, yeah.
A lot of it is due to some of your very good work.
Yes.
Remember that.
I remember being at the table, but...
And I do want to tip my hat to the administration because without you guys, you do great work. And so with LIC, I just thank everyone who's involved in that, because I know it's a great deal of time, so thank you.
Could you paraphrase what, what is on that document or what the concurrence was for?
Okay, I'll read it. It is. Is the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution is due annually on March 1st of each year, and it states, whereas the school board of district has an AIPAC composed of parents and guardians of American Indian children who are eligible for Indian education programs, American Indian language and culture teachers and parent professionals, American Indian teachers, American Indian counselors, American Indian adults enrolled in educational program, and American Indian representatives from community. Whereas the school board of district affords the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee the necessary information and the opportunity to effectively express their views concerning all aspects of American Indian education and educational needs of the American Indian children enrolled in the schools and programs. And whereas the APAC is directly involved with and advises the school board and district staff on Indian education programming planning, and whereas the APAC develops and submits recommendations to the school board and district staff pertaining to the needs of American Indian students. Therefore, be it resolved that the APAC concurs that the school board and the district are compliant with Minnesota Statute Section 124D.78, and that the school board and district are meeting the needs of American Indian students. And it has either you are, which means we, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, issue a vote of concurrence. We attest that the school board and/or district are compliant with Minnesota statutes, and that the school board and/or district are meeting the needs of American Indian students at this time. So this is a yearly review, but it's continuously an ongoing, but the state needs it every year.
And we do have, it's the Indian policies and procedures that go into detail?
Right, and then that's part of the federal grant, the Impact Aid. This is with the American Indian Education Aid that's administered through the state. So, yeah, so, but it covers concurrence for the federal and the state.
It does cover, okay.
I'm going in maybe my third year on the board, and this is the first time that this has happened this week. I can get them.
This is the first year, it has gone, oh, no, second year.
Second year.
Did we vote against it last year?
Yes, we did. We did get a vote of concurrence last year.
I have a question, and perhaps not to be addressed now, but definitely in April, the 25th, I'd like to know how the American Indian curriculum is doing this year? How, what is the perception of Grand Portage? And then I'd like to hear from...
That's being offered here, that's being taught here at Cook County, right. There's also the 11 reservations, they're putting together an education, American Indian curriculum for the state, so we're working on that, so that's going to be a state.
So I would like to have our programming assessed, I'd like to hear about Grand Portage's input, I'd like to hear from Mr. Littke as to how he feels it's going, and what points aren't getting covered, and is it getting, I mean, where can it be improved? I'm sure it's doing a lot of good things.
Well, we've been taking surveys, the American Indian Parent Committee have been taking surveys from the kids, I've been talking to the kids and seeing what, how, what they think of the material, but I have yet to sit in because I've been so busy, but I plan on doing it this month, April, so that I can sit in on David Littkey's class. I know they're doing sugar bushing up in Portage right now, so I've been doing that too, so.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thanks.
But I will send you, to all the board members, send out the copies once I upload it to the states, you'll have one.
All right, 8.3, bond update, updated on the RI, Ryan. Ryan and I already talked before the meeting, no kidding.
It's fine by the door.
Yeah.
So we just, we had a couple of things going on with the bonds still, so we were here today trying to resolve just the last kind of closeout items, I guess, for the science and culinary arts. We've got just a number, relatively small number, decreasing number anyway, of punch list items, as well as we're trying to get final paperwork closed out with Max Gray Construction. And so there's a final change order that is coming, and I got the final numbers resolved actually today because I got tired of waiting. So to be honest, there's been some hangups on our end getting information, and so that's part of why that paperwork isn't wrapped up. And so we just made the executive decision that we're going to enter the numbers that we feel are appropriate. That said, the final change order is looking like a credit to the district. A lot of that comes primarily due to the liquidated damages clause in the contract. And so that liquidated damages comes back to the district as a credit of $27,500. And so that's going to hurt them a little bit, but that's the nature of what they agreed to, that's terms and conditions of the contract. So the other part of it is just some final wrap-up things, just little things that came up during construction and so forth, so it's looking like a net credit back to the district of just shy of $13,000. So going back through that whole project, I just did some rough numbers here, so for those of you that were on the board at the time when that contract got approved, that contract was a little bit higher than anybody would have liked. It was on budget, but it was still a concern, and so we looked at options on reducing that cost. We went through a couple of different changes to bring that number down to basically build contingency in to the project. And so that said, we had taken out originally, was it, 170, just shy of $173,000. At the end, as we kind of get through everything, the net cost increased from that revised dollar amount, so we took out $173,000. We've actually added in only just less than $16,000 from that original amount. So with the exception of, there was a larger dollar amount that's in there, but that's actually tied back to work that was performed on behalf of Cook County YMCA, and so that's in there, but going back to your project itself, it was more, but with that liquidated damages, it brings that down a little bit. So just to put it in general perspective, the overall change orders on the project, and I won't count the liquidated damages as a credit to you, so I'm going to look at it as the $15,800 and change that I talked about, almost $16,000 in additional from where we started, actually is closer, just over $43,000, but that $27,500 credit brings that down. So all in, that's 1.66% of the original adjusted construction cost. So that's based on the $2.6 million that we had revised it to with the value engineering. So on a messy, very messy remodeling project, you know, we asked clients to carry a 10% contingency, and we were under 2% overall at the end of the day, which is, in the industry, the goal is to be under 1 in new construction, and so for the messy nature of this project being under 2, I'm pretty content with that personally. I think that we didn't have any real major surprises, so just to put it in perspective, it all went fairly well in the grand scheme of things. We are going to work with Dr. Crandall to, basically, there's clauses in the contract where we can essentially force the issue to get the work done, and so we are going to take, not legal action per se, but we're going to take advantage of a clause in the contract that gives the contractor a deadline. Otherwise, the district will have that work performed, and we will deduct that from the amount that gets paid to the contractor. Just to make sure, and just to let you guys know, we've been holding their feet to the fire. We are holding in the neighborhood of $140,000 still from the contractor, and quite honestly, there's not that much left to be done, and so there's more than enough money there to cover any of those expenses, and so it would be, that's pretty standard that we would hold money. We're actually holding more than we... We're actually holding more than we need to, but they haven't really pushed to get it back from the district, because they know that they're the ones that are causing the delays. So that's my general summary on that. There is one other kind of hanging item, which there's some ventilation noise, and maybe you've heard about that on the science wing. And so we had our engineer here with some testing equipment today, taking a look and trying to resolve that. And so we're gonna continue to push through getting a resolution for that. We don't know what to do in time, we've looked at a couple of different things, we've tried some adjustments to the system. We're taking it to the next level, I think we're gonna have to do some reconfiguring, that should be no cost to the district, so we'll continue to push that through as well. So on that, that's kind of my update there. I think there's just a few punch list items left, they're very, very slowly picking away at those. Essentially, this clause is gonna give them ten days to get it done before you have the right to just go ahead and just get it done. So, if we end up in that scenario, I will work with the district to find people to do that work, and we'll help facilitate that. Anytime that we spend in that regard, actually, we'll also get built back to the contractor. So our time involved in helping, if I guess if that's requested, we'll get also built back to the contractor. So, because it takes a lot of time to chase that stuff down, which is why that clause is in the contract. So, and also why we're holding in a lot of money that we are. That's kind of my general update on that overall. So at the end of the day, it's been dragged out, but we're, you know, overall dollar-wise and everything, it came out actually pretty good compared to where it could have. We want, you might be talking about that, tell them a little bit, so if you wanna wait and do that.
We're also looking at one of the other areas that ARI can address, we let Ryan share where we're at with.
Yeah. Yeah, so we have been working with Kraus Anderson through National Joint Powers Association, and a program called Sourcewell. Basically, it's contract, it's the contract, it's, it's basically unit price contracting. And so, it's purchase contracting, they're an approved vendor through the state, so they've pre-bid all of their work scopes. And it goes back to unit prices for everything, and so we put together a set of documents for revising the roof, and we've been working with them on schedule. Right now, the goal is to get them under contract for phase one, which would start, I think it was twentieth of May, and go through the end of June. That initial scope is to address the roof itself, and so there's a couple of things that we're doing with that. One, the goal, the original goal of the project started out as environmental noise transfer from the exterior of the building into the inside. We got through some testing acoustically, we had some equipment brought up, got some recommendations from some specialists that work on that sort of thing. We work around airports, and that's that type of work, to identify the frequencies and what we can do to knock down the noise. The biggest issue is actually impact noise here, and so with that, the system is a little bit more robust than is there now. There's also some structural modifications that we're gonna do, not because the roof is a danger of collapsing or anything. It's perfectly, actually, it has that additional capacity, but what it's gonna do is it's gonna stiffen it up for acoustic reasons, and it's also gonna give us the opportunity to explore some additional access options for lighting and so forth. And there's one of the biggest challenges in there right now, is the students really can't actually work on the lighting, because there is no access to it, it's a safety issue. So that's kind of the next piece of this. We had some initial thoughts, and we looked at some systems. We're gonna take a step back, because those systems were a little bit cost prohibitive, which is what we kind of expected, but until we had the hard numbers, we didn't know for sure. So the intention is, is that that phase one would be done by the end of June. And so that's been worked into the schedule for the A C A. So we've been working with Sue Hennessy there, and so she's aware of it, and she's been kind of scheduling those open windows. Initial intent was, is that phase two, if it goes forward, would occur, I think we talked about beginning of August?
Yes.
And so that would continue into the school year a little bit, so we're exploring some other opportunities and things that may happen. Your curtains are in need of replacement in the auditorium anyway, and some of those other things that we, Tom has been working on, so those might roll into that project scope as well, just to, we're gonna have people here on site, so take advantage of that. And I think that, that kind of fell right in line with where we thought it would budget-wise as well. If there's any questions on that?
Any other questions for Ryan?
Lots of questions, no questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the board, other, we had posting the website bill that we have under our security. We talked about the roof, bus garage, us closed, vehicles, no change there. Deferred maintenance, we had, say, bus garage with a separate piece, because it wasn't building a bus garage, but the heater for the bus garage was installed, installed, that uses waste, waste oil. And then F F and E, the container that Bill was on air, also kind of those last lingering items that Mr. Gesh wanted to outfit the culinary arts, and then also equipment set up for our O T P T room. And no, and then we heard from ARI regarding what was going on in the science and the culinary arts.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Dr. Crandall, about the bond? All right, eight point four, to approve the expenditure revenue report, January twenty nineteen.
So that report's the same style report that you see. Ms. Backlund's here, if there are any specific questions regarding that report. Looking at that, you can see we're at what, sixty-one percent of the budget at this point, which, at the end of this week, we are the third grade period end, so we're three-fourths of the way through the year.
Okay, I need a motion to approve.
Do you know if there's anything board members share about, if there's any bills or anything, if there's anything?
No, I don't, I don't have anything to ask or say. Thank you, though.
All right, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. All right, eight point five, student school board representative update, assistant principal door.
Yeah, I spent some time with Ms. Megan Rebelki, who is our advisor for our student council, so our high school student council. We sat down and talked about the best way to move forward with a student rep on the school board. They were kind of in the midst of working on the common ground and coming off of that. And she had talked to the kids, and they had, they had come up with the idea that they thought they should try to find the right student for that at the end of this year, so that that student would be in place to right away begin next year. Wasn't that they wanted to not have it this year, it was just they thought, wow, we're gonna, they kind of see it as a little bit of a challenge, because it's something new, and so they were kind of learning what would that role look like, and what would the expectations be? And so they just thought it would be better to start right away next year. But they, they did say that, you know, they would, they would take on producing the student highlight for us in the last two board meetings, instead of that being myself or Ms. Myers kind of finding that, or sometimes it's Pam kind of going, don't forget about this, and they said that they would take the ownership of that, so. Next two meetings, they will present the, the student highlight for the board, and then we'll start with the student rep next year as the, as the school year begins.
Well, so I think what we had agreed on for the flow that we wanted to do was bringing on somebody in January, January first, a junior, who would then have two semesters, second semester of their junior year, first semester of their senior year. And then, then the new person would be another junior who would then come on mid-year.
Sure.
In, along with the calendar year, not the academic year, just to allow that continuity.
Yeah.
That way, to provide for a full year. So I, I mean, assuming that that's actually what our intention is, you know, we haven't done it yet, but I guess I'd be hesitant to start this person at the beginning of the academic year. If, if we do wanna have that calendar year flow, then we're just gonna replace that person, you know, a couple of months later. You know what I mean?
Yep.
So, so.
Or else we're just gonna be on a different scheduling.
So I wasn't on the board then, but I listened to the discussion, it seemed like the reason we talked about, you talked about doing it in January, was so that we could get somebody on sooner and not late in the fall? But maybe I forgot to say something, was there a reason to start January?
Yeah, so that you could have a junior come on at the same time as, at the beginning of the, you know, when.
Yeah, the board member comes on, okay.
Exactly, and then you're kind of on for a full cycle of the board, you know, and they're kind of matched up. It, it, it was modeled off of, some other district did it this way.
Correct.
With the intention of having some continuity, because then when that person retired, they were still halfway through their senior year, and they could provide maybe some mentorship for the next junior who was beginning, you know, and then they kind of overlap a little bit that way. So.
We could do it, the more I think about it, the more I see a, see if, and you know, it doesn't, we don't, we're not in a rush now. We could think through it, I wanna make sure somehow that it's student-driven, so it works. And I'm kind of thinking about the January thing, going, you got the Christmas break there, and you have students deciding, is that gonna be good timing? I'm not, I'm not certain, I'm not against it, I just wanna, trying to see the timing of actually electing the student and doing the voting, and what that looks like on the ground in the school.
Could you do it in November? I mean.
Probably.
If you did that along with our, right, actual election time is November. And so really, there would be time September and October for the student council to do, and, you know, and then there's things with admin and things and the board. And so that could all, we'd have plenty of time to get all that set, have the election, and then there could be some orientation, a little orientation in December, and then that person's ready to go in January.
We could do that.
And then they'll learn the whole process.
Yeah.
They'll learn the process of campaigning, almost, you know?
Yes, yeah.
And I think it would be good for them to come and experience what a meeting looks like, and all of those things before getting into that.
Yeah, 'cause maybe they do wanna come and see what it's all about before they say, hey, I wanna do, wanna do that. So they have that opportunity to come and listen to us, and see if they, if this, that's what they're thinking, and so.
Yeah.
If that works, hopefully. Okay. All right, any other question? So then that'll be on your calendar then, to get that?
It will be, Ms. Rebelki and I were head by the meeting and get after this meeting.
Somebody's calendar.
It's on my schedule.
Perfect, great. All right, eight point six, college readiness testing update.
Okay, and you have a form in your packet, eight point six.
Yeah.
If you look at that first page of eight point six, on the top, it says A P five-year school score summary. I didn't know how much information you wanted, so I tried to cut it back, and I still feel like I gave you too many pages. Because when you get a sample size of ours, sometimes you're looking at a class of twenty-five or a class of forty, you can really move numbers to make them look, which, you know, you can try to sell somebody on the numbers, say this, or they don't. I just wanted to focus on a few numbers and then give you a little historical context of where we're at as a district. If you look in the first box there to the right, it's got a two thousand fourteen on the left, and then two thousand eighteen on the right. And then the very first row there, under Cook County High School, it says total A P students. Does everybody see that? So under two thousand fourteen, it says seventeen, and if you go over to two thousand eighteen, it says fifty-three. And so just one of the points I wanted to make is, in the last five years, we now have three times as many A P students now as we had before. And I, and I'll, and I'll give you some historical context why in just a second. Then if you go down to the next one, we had number of exams, we had twenty exams in two thousand fourteen. Two thousand eighteen, we had a hundred and six. So that's over five times the exams.
What, what does that mean, number of, what kind of exams?
They'll take an A P exam, and those A P exams are scored on a scale of one to five. If they score a five, it's pretty much universally recognized by universities all around the country as college credit. So that kid will get college credit for that course, or be exempted from taking that course altogether, if it's a prerequisite at that university. If they get a one, it's not a great score, and I can give you some reasons why you might get a one. But the hundred and six test, that might be, that's taken by those fifty-three students. So you might have one student who's in one A P course, you might have one student who's in four A P courses, you might have, and they might choose to take the test, or they might choose not to take the test. Each test right now currently that a student takes is ninety-four dollars. So we used to, as a district, pay that full amount. We used to pay for it for all the kids, we paid for all the A P exams. Now we ask a student who is able to pay fifty dollars towards that exam, the district pays the other forty-four, simply because this number was getting so large. We will see it continue to grow, it's very popular. So, for example, right now at Cook County Schools, we have A P world history, we have A P English, we have A P physics, we have A P calculus, we have A P environmental science, we have A P Spanish, we have A P statistics, we have A P chemistry, and we have an option for students who wanna get an A P art credit. Next year, Mr. Fedema wants to get trained this summer to teach economics and government A P. If he does indeed do that, we'll have over eleven courses. With the schedule built the way that it is with the block scheduling, I know that my son, for instance, would be able to do all eleven if he wanted. So let's, let's say that our driven.
Some juniors take, A P could be junior or senior, right?
It can be.
It could be, a freshman could take it.
Yeah, freshman.
So my son took one of these as a freshman. It's rare, it's a little more rare, but it fits in your schedule, and you, we pre-approved, and we have our instructors.
Classes their senior year.
Correct. So let's just say they took those eleven courses. That's up to thirty-three credits they'll earn here at Cook County Schools, college credits, which is roughly a year of school. So many of our students are gonna leave here, and they're gonna immediately be sophomores. Okay, so that's roughly, and I did the math, and I just generated this off the state average of ten schools, those kids that are doing that are saving thirty-three thousand dollars of college education. These are rough numbers, and everybody's situation's different. The reason why I don't wanna go back and look at the scores and take, break all those down is, is just twofold, is what happened when we started, so ten years ago, we didn't have any A P courses here. We had what we call college in the schools. College in the schools is very popular, I taught college in the schools economics, college in the schools psychology, and I taught college in the schools government. We do that either through the University of Minnesota Duluth or Lake Spear College, and a kid could order, get three credits, four credits, or five credits depending upon the course. We did that forever. The Minnesota State system kind of came in and said, we're no longer gonna allow high schools teachers who are going through this training to do that, they're gonna need a master's in whatever it is they're teaching. I didn't have my master's in econ, I had my master's in education, doesn't count. So we turned to A P. We did that largely after a lot of other schools, I, I feel like we came in a little late in the game. I did the rough math, we have, over the last ten years, I think it was over twelve hundred and fifty credits awarded through our college in the schools program before A P even came in. So for a small school, we've offered kids a lot of opportunity to compete with their counterparts in the metro area that have these type of courses. Our teachers do not get any additional pay for going out and getting the training to get A P certified. They don't get any additional pay to prep them for this test. Our teachers that, in this field, we're really lucky to have some of these instructors who just wanna do this, because they know they wanna offer it. And so I think what you're gonna see is that the total number of exams and the total number of students is gonna go up. The reason why I don't focus on the score so much, like we get into on the bottom of that box, percentage of total A P students, the score is of three or higher. The reason why I don't focus on the score so much, like we get into on the bottom of that box, percentage of total AP students, the scores of three or higher. And you can see the fluctuation, seventy point six to forty-two to seventy-six to fifty-seven. What happens is, is Mitch Door thinks his kid's the brightest kid in America. He goes, I'm gonna make him, my kid take those two AP courses, then you're gonna take them when they're freshmen. And the instructor says, you know, I love your kid, but really not quite ready. I don't know if they should take the exam. No, my kid's the smartest kid in America. Takes the two courses, gets ones or twos. I mean, these, these tests are not easy. These are not easy tests, and it can be humbling. And so what happens is oftentimes, we don't say, no, you can't take the test. We just advise. And what happens is a kid wants to know where they're at, and they take some tests, and they're not necessarily ready. And so I don't get too locked into these scores because um we don't drive who takes the test necessarily. Yeah, do we wanna encourage them to take the test? Yeah, they took, they did all the coursework. We'd love to see them take the test. Um, but we often know of cases where we have a freshman taking it or a sophomore, and they're not quite ready. But we've had students really flourish in this too. I've just talked to two students, and they're all excited 'cause they're gonna be sophomore eligible next year. And they didn't think it was gonna add up quite like that. So that's, that's a pretty neat thing for those, those parents. The following pages, then the next four or five pages breaks down each course that we had offered and how each kid did in each year and their scores. I don't feel like I need to go over all those with you. Matter of fact, the one on the mic macroeconomics was a student who took the AP course and didn't even take the AP course here at Cook County. Yes, yeah.
So uh the rise in popularity of the AP, what do you attribute that? You know, increasing numbers, especially this last year was driving that sort of advertising campaign that you were doing or?
We definitely do talk about it a lot more, and parents who have, parents in this community especially, they're looking for opportunities for their kids, talk to parents a lot more. And when they know, hey, we don't have to move to get these opportunities, and our kids have a chance at taking these things here. That word really spreads, and um to be honest, it is the, it is one of the really positive avenues for our kids who are accelerated, for our kids who are really driven. It's a great avenue for them to say, hey, I, I get rewarded, I get a substantial reward if I do well here. And it's not driven by me or Ms. Myers or any, it's driven kind of by the kid and.
When did we start doing the cost sharing thing? We've, we've covered all the costs, the ninety dollars, what year?
This year.
This year's the first year.
This is the first year.
Correct me if I'm wrong, you said students, you said if you can pay the fifty dollars, please do so, right?
We have three tiers. We have, you pay fifty dollars a test if you can afford it. If you qualify for screen reduced, you pay ten dollars a test. And if you simply have financial hardship and you cannot afford to pay, you contact me. And that, that's happened this year, and we, we will cover, we're not gonna deny a student because they can't afford the test.
It would also be, I'm just thinking from my own experience within the school, I feel like two thousand fourteen had graduated class size of twenty-nine. Correct me if I'm wrong, and I think some of it, not all of it, but some of it might simply be class size.
Right, what's the percentage of that?
For sure, that's some of it.
Juniors and seniors, I, I feel like two thousand fourteen was my first class of seniors that I saw graduate. There were twenty, twenty-nine students. It was a remarkably small.
Right. And you just have to remember to.
Mostly juniors and seniors are taking AP, generally speaking.
Kind of. That's where it gets a little.
It could be.
A little murky.
It's each in the last year.
It is.
I would say the last two years.
It is.
But I think our enrollment in general has gone up slightly.
Yeah, probably a little bit.
Gone up a little bit, which I mean, more kids might.
Probably.
Able to.
Well, I hate to be like, okay, well, we got this new program and here, come and do it, and it's great. We'll pay for you to take the test, like, awesome, and then the program's getting really popular. People are doing it, and then now we're like, well, now actually it's super popular, but you gotta start paying now. So I wonder if that's gonna affect the popularity at all, and you know, that may have driven it regardless of your financial means, you know? It's, a good deal's a good deal regardless of how much money you make.
Well, it's an opportunity to get college credit.
For sure.
Here.
For sure.
I wrote a check for two fifty 'cause I had five between my two kids, and I'm like, it was the best money I ever spent. If one of those kids in one test gets a five, I just made a lot of money.
Sure.
Um, I agree with you and I understand your, your point. Um, we have a lot of people taking tests this year. And I think that um the only, I, I, I agree to an extent, and then it's, I wish that, you know, we've had a lot of turnover in this little process as we've changed, and I wish we would've just communicated sooner and better. And um moving forward, I think it'll be a lot easier. This was kind of the, we stumbled through this first one 'cause we got the word out late, and uh that won't happen again.
And I think as long as the, I like the tier idea and the concept that if you can't cover this, we wanna help you. But also with all these kids taking these courses, and if you're a kid who's like, mm, I'd probably get a one, I don't know that I wanna take the test, and then the school offers it for free, you might be more likely to be like, well, I'm gonna give it a shot 'cause it's free, why not? I just have to go spend a little bit of my time there.
Right.
I think there's some level of accountability when your own money is involved or your own parents' money is involved.
We had twenty-five unused tests last year. They signed up and they didn't take it.
So which is a waste of money.
We paid for it still. A test that nobody took, 'cause they have to get ordered, they have to order the test, and then the kid doesn't have to show up and take the test.
On the day of, they decided, well, you know, I guess I'm.
Not doing it. So that was part of the reason why Institute of the B is part of that, that category is that one. So I, my suggestion though, I, because I also, as well as parents, I got that email, it's like, what are you talking about? We have to pay for these? Well, I guess we approve them, whatever. And so I was communicating with Mr. Door saying, this isn't enough time. Hopefully my, I didn't have to write this, or just check this Mr. Door did. But um can we add that to the student handbook, a list of fees?
We will.
Okay, because I scanned it and I didn't see it in there, and so I think if we have it in our fees, perfect. I think if we laid out in our student fees at the beginning of the year, so parents know, um, you know, because you know, you have a lot of things and you have things. I just want to make sure that everyone has the notice. And you know, I think it's, it's fantastic that we can offer uh these AP courses. One question I was wondering about is the AP test now on our, you know, like MCAs for example, or the um the other testing that we do, you can go in and see what area of the test the student did well in. Do AP tests, are they along that lines or not? Because when I was looking, you know, certainly some of the courses, you know, they're difficult, and so the scores maybe they're only, people are getting ones and twos. Does that teacher have an opportunity to go in, look at where the student scored and what sections? And I don't know if that would impact their teaching of that course.
I believe that they get some kind of a, I don't know this for sure.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask David about this, but I think David, like, when he does his history, I think he gets a report back saying they, they, they did the strongest in this and this was the weak area, so then he knows what he's gotta cover.
Okay.
And to be honest, that's why lots of our AP teachers feel a little stressed when you get forced no days. Like, they, they count those days so close because they know they have, the AP tests don't happen at the end of the year necessarily.
No.
They happen maybe two weeks before the end or, and so they're counting.
They're early May.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're counting every day, so.
Some are April.
You know.
Oh, because I did wonder that. I thought, you know, that would also help that teacher teach that AP class if they got a report back saying, okay, this is the area that the students score the lowest in or, um, so, okay.
That's where you can see the, the highest fever students, the little bit of AP they have afterwards, and they're like, we're done with the test? Why, why are we even coming to the last couple of weeks of class?
Yeah, that's a challenging time of year.
Senior students.
It's very challenging.
The only other thing of note that I like to look at is the very last page. Very last page is just a summary of the class of two thousand eighteen. When they took the ACT, they put down like their preferences of schools. And I always kind of like to look at that, and I like to see the summary of the class and what it is and where they're reporting their scores. It gives me an idea of.
Just tell me what it says at the top.
I'm sorry, yeah, it says ACT profile report, and it says table four point three, student score report preferences at time of testing. And oftentimes then, that tells me if, as a counseling department or the people in the building, are we doing a good job of preparing them for where those schools are? Are we preparing them for life in Colorado or North Dakota State, or what do they have to offer, and are we talking about those programs? And I kind of like that as a good reminder for me to get, I don't need to think like a forty-four-year-old when I'm in school. I need to understand what a fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old kid is thinking about, and I can't lose sight of that. And so every year I kind of look at the summary, and then I see if we have any trends over time. And then we kind of look, get some more supplies from these schools and show those that are in, you know, in our counselor's office, so.
I think everyone who requested this, thank you so much that you put this all together. And can we maybe make this a yearly thing, just like the MCAs and whatnot, that we just?
Sure.
Yeah, look at it.
Well, and what's the process for making that decision about the fee? Like, is that, how does that go about, and when is that gonna come back around?
We just saw a large expense going out.
Well, sure, I mean, it's an invest, I mean, it's an investment in, you know, people offering our students a leg up, you know?
We also saw twenty-five kids, and that was actually last year, but we implemented.
Yeah, no.
Huge expense going out, you know, twenty-five.
The process was.
Well, I mean, some might say it's a cost of doing business. If you're gonna offer something free, yeah, you might end up, I mean, I'd hate to focus strictly on that, make a decision, 'cause, well, some people didn't do it, so we wasted that money, so sorry, everybody. You know, if it's like a good program, I don't think that's the right thing to focus on. Is there a way to be creative though, you know, to, 'cause I, I honestly don't necessarily subscribe to the fact that if you're financially committed or somebody in your family is, that you're gonna have more skin in the game. 'Cause some kids, you know, my parents are just gonna pay for that, and that doesn't affect their, their attitude at all. They don't, they don't feel that. Some kids may not even approach it because they don't know, 'cause it's not, you know, they don't wanna go through the hoops of like, well, I gotta approach Mr. Door and be like, I can't, I really wanna do this, I don't wanna pay for it, I can't, or whatever. I mean, that's like a lot of extra like stress and effort for somebody to have to go through to do that. And I just kind of like the idea of, we don't have to worry about that. If you wanna, if you wanna try to take this thing, we're gonna offer that. And so I'm not saying that we need to like re-litigate that right now, I'm just wondering when we can, 'cause maybe there's a creative way of doing it and kind of like, you know?
Maybe there's a, if you don't show up for the test, you're expected to pay back money or?
Or like, if you get a certain points, if you score good enough, you get it covered, you know?
If it's, if somebody's in emergency or something crazy, that's one thing, but it's another thing if you're just like, I just don't feel like it today.
Well, the one thing they are gaining is they're gonna get college credit if they, uh, if they, if they take the test, or they may not. I mean, that's their, their gain is this education. I mean, they're, they're going forward. Their goal is, I've gotta get out of this joint, I wanna, I wanna go off to college. You know, so they've gotta take a class anyway, but they might have a chance to earn college credit. So it's to their advantage to take the test, you know?
I, for sure. I look at this as like, like the activities director, I see this as an activity. They, they don't have to take the test. They're not gonna get caught unless. We have, we have never, ever denied a kid at Cook County Schools, ever, to do anything 'cause of money, like when it comes to extracurriculars. And these students that we're talking, well, these are the students who, I mean, they're our best. They really are. They're, these kids are in it, and so I think that, you know, as an admin team, when we came, our counselor recommended this, and then principals and the super got together and we said, this makes sense. I don't know, I know that my kids know they have something in the game, you know, and I know other kids do. I, I, I don't think kids flippantly take this test. And I, I would really feel, maybe, maybe you're right, but I guess maybe I'm over, maybe I'm overconfident. I don't, I don't see kids squirreling out of it 'cause they don't have money. I, I hope that's accurate.
Well, the work is, you don't, you know, oh, I think I'll take an AP class, what the heck? That's extra work to start with. I mean, so the students that are choosing to take an AP class, you know, they are a little more interested in learning or driven or, you know, they, they're, they're going for it in this particular, not in all the subjects necessarily, but. But as, as Mr. Door said, this, for decades, I speak from decades of experience, this district has never denied any student an opportunity to do whatever it is because of a lack of funds. There's always money or funding that appears, shows up, covers, and we don't exclude anyone. Since we've now taken care of that hot lunch issue a few years ago, where if they didn't have the money, they'd have to have a cheese sandwich? Oh, yuck. So anyway, we, we tried to make it so our kids feel like we're all.
Well, and I think some of that is certainly messaging, you know, and how, because I think we, perhaps we've never explicitly denied somebody because of money, but we maybe implicitly denied them because they knew there was a fee and they didn't even step forward in the first place, because they didn't wanna put themselves in that position. So I think if it's packaged and like, this is open to everyone regardless, and then it's like, you know, I think the clinic does a pretty good job with this, you know, they have a sliding fee scale, and it's like, you know, doing whatever we can to encourage people to participate without it being like, you know, an undue or just an extra bit of stress or whatever on them to have to ask for it to be subsidized or get a scholarship or something, you know?
It's not the students.
Parents, and that's where the, that's where it is. There'll be parents that say, we can, we can take care of this, we're not gonna. But somebody else who needs it more than us will figure it out.
I mean, I'm, I'm guessing that there's kids in this district, in this county, that are taking more ownership over their education than perhaps their parents are. You know, and those are maybe the kids that we need to be helping, you know, encouraging a little bit more. And if they get some college credit, you know, like, oh, I took this class and I happen to do good and I got this college credit, well, maybe I'll go to college now. You know, like, I can do this, you know? It's like, you know, maybe that's not the majority, but those are people that are here, you know, that are gonna wanna help out, so.
So, so how is this funded?
General fund.
Just general fund, so?
Just like some of the things, PSCO, general.
So the board has an opportunity to weigh in on fees when we approve the student handbook, and fees are part of that. So I would say that, that that would be our opportunity to say, we don't want that as a fee. We do have that, I mean, and obviously admin will make their recommendation, but we as a board do have, it is, we, you could, you know, somebody could propose that that fee is removed. And so I guess I, I think what we should do is we should talk about this, 'cause I, Danny, you've, you've made some very valid, great points. And so I think as part of reviewing those handbooks and things, that we should have a fee, looking over those fees, 'cause those fees increase, like the lunch fee, athletic fee things increase, and so I, you know, it'll be on that, and then that'll be our, our opportunity to discuss it. And um so I think that's a good, it's some kind of thing called it.
Sure, well, and in context of everything, it's helpful too.
Exactly. So when all the fees are laid out, you can say, okay, I've got three kids or whatever, this is what this school year is going to cost me.
So I, I kind of, I mean, I do agree with what you were saying. I would like to know why I ask where it comes from. Is let's say this continues to grow, let's say we paid for it, uh, for students fully, and that continued to grow. What other programs coming out of the general fund would be impacted as a result of that, which is gonna impact kids who are not college bound?
Right.
Who maybe don't have the same opportunities.
Sure.
Or, or capacity, so it just seems like it's a bit of a balancing game.
Yeah.
Opportunity, capacity, or interest.
Right.
I just feel like that's important.
It, it is.
Just 'cause you're not college bound does not mean you're.
No, that's right.
This is not.
Thank you, I should, I should, but I just would like to understand, if that goes up, what are we gonna cut somewhere else? Does that would be a problem too?
Sure, yep, no, that's a great point.
Great information. Any other question, questions for? Great information, any other question, questions for Mr. Door on this, um, information?
Well, I read through the whole thing.
Yeah, I thought it was. I thought it was really good information too.
I loved it. I froze through everything.
I have a question, what is the NCAA eligibility center that somebody's, what is that?
Is it basketball?
Any of our athletes who want to be eligible to play in division two or one, any, any activity whatsoever, has to go through the NCAA clearinghouse, matter of fact, a lot of D three students do now as well. And so any of those kids that wanna go and play in college have to be cleared by the NCAA clearinghouse. And so they will send their scores to the NCAA to make sure that they're eligible to play. So the NCAA has got strict guidelines, we usually have to update our profile every two years. And they have to know that all of our courses are, have integrity in comparison to everybody else around the country.
Is that's quite a process for your council to involve, course descriptions and such.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, eight point seven to approve the FY nineteen budget revision with expenditures of eleven million and some change and revenue of eight million and some change there, the numbers are created with seven.
So there's a document in your. Oh, also another handle forward. So what you'll see in your packet is on the top section are the expenditures, on the bottom section are the revenues. And you see we have all the funds there, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and five, which is our whole balance for us. When you look at things, you know, for example, food service, we're, we're at expenditures of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, almost two hundred and eighty, and you go down to revenue and we're at two thousand four hundred, or excuse me, two hundred and forty-seven thousand. That is on purpose, we have been told by the state that we are carrying too much in our fund balance, so we need to spend that down. So that's on purpose that our expenditures are higher in, in food service. Community Ed, you'll see that we have coming in the one hundred and eighty-seven and, or excuse me, going out is one eighty-seven and coming in is one eighty-nine. So we're balanced there, deposited for community Ed. Those, I, I bring those two up because they're standalone, those are items, they're not part of the general fund. When you look at the total expenditures, you see those, the funds where we adjusted from the ten million, almost eleven million, you know, up to the eleven million. And if you look at the next line, it has a total of funds, one, three, and five, that, that's the money that we really have control over. The other funds are our debt, um, fund six is our building construction and that, that's where that big bucks come from. We, we received the revenue two years ago? We're spending it this year, so we have the money in the bank, we're spending it now. But because we're spending it now, it's showing that it's our expenditure now. So when you really look at what we're actually doing, if you look at funds one, three, and five, which are our total expenditures are in your proposed adjusted to six point five million and you look at our, then revenue, and you adjust it at seven point one million, we're building our fund balance. And now if you switch over, we'll take questions after, but just so you show kind of our trend of our general fund balance. So we've had in two thousand and fourteen, we were at twenty-three percent, two thousand and fifteen, we went down to eight percent, two thousand and sixteen, down to ten, then the bond came in and we started moving up. Two thousand and seventeen, uh, up to twelve percent, and now two thousand and eighteen, we're at twenty-four percent.
So what, what's the goal, how, how much are we building up to?
Seventeen percent is our goal.
Seventeen, huh, so we're at twenty-four percent.
So we've made our goal.
Exceeded it.
Exceeded it, exactly. And so one of the things that was brought up as well is now we need to look forward. So what I'd like to present tonight are just some questions for the board to really think about and then set goals at our April meeting. Because you're just seeing this for the first time kind of, as far as what our just budget is. But questions I have, you know, what, what is, uh, what is it that we wanna do as a board for the school district as far as our fund balance? Is it that we just want, do not want to go below seventeen percent? Another question you may ask is where seventeen percent come from? That's Minnesota School Board Association, that's their recommendation, is to keep the fund balance at seventeen percent. That's approximately or roughly, and I, I looked at you, is that, or two months, correct?
It's on the chart.
Yeah, it's at the top.
Oh.
Yeah, it's at the top.
Thank you. So that's, that's where that seventeen percent, that, that's two months and that's what they recommend.
Yes, yeah.
Boards that have. Administration recommends that as well, that we, we stay there. Next question for the board to consider is, do we wanna set aside or commit funds? Uh, for the future, for capital projects and the examples I put, we wanna have curriculum, we set aside and commit funds, so it is restricted in essence to curriculum, bus purchase down, down the line. FF and E or furniture, technology, athletics, uh, we, we just talked about one. You know, it could be specific, we, we set a line item, but we're going to fund AP courses. You know, that, those are some things that we could actually designate that we are going to put funds in our budget into that area. You know, so those are some of the things to think about. You know, recommendations, I, you know, for curriculum, we haven't set a number, but we've kind of had a soft goal of eighty thousand dollars. So for curriculum purchase, we just, we set that in there. Buses, a bus is around ninety thousand dollars, so we could set something in our budget there. FF and E, not really sure what, I, I put twenty-five thousand dollars as a, as an area. And that would include, you know, obviously all of our furnitures, any kind of equipment.
What kind, sorry, what kind of timeframe are we talking about here, is this like for?
We're, we're setting, uh, looking at goals, so we look at our future, we could put it into our next year's budget, is what I'm looking at. So June would be when we'd be, the board would be accepting FY twenty's budget. And in that budget, we could set aside funds, you know, eighty thousand dollars, that is going to be for curriculum for next year. You know, I, we probably don't need a bus.
We're talking about assigning funds maybe six years out for buses.
Bus replacement, and that's exactly.
So say for example, we could set.
And they're kind of sitting there waiting because we don't know what's gonna happen, but we know in six years, we're gonna need to buy buses.
So we could commit funds, you know, so say for example.
It's not just necessarily for like twenty-twenty spending, it's.
No.
Great.
Okay.
It's, it's separate little savings accounts.
Sure.
We know that this one's gonna be for curriculum, we know this one's gonna be for AP testing, we know this one's gonna be for buses.
Are they intouchable?
No.
No, yeah, cause they're not.
It's under.
Yeah, it's un, cause what are you, what are you calling it?
It's not restricted.
It's not.
Not restricted, we're committed.
It's committed or assigned.
It's a, committed or assigned, it can.
And the board can uncommit them and uncommit them.
Unassigned at any time.
So the board, if you take action to do that, then you can take action to undo it. Or if you commit it for school buses, for example, I can spend it on school buses one time, but it's fine, so.
What is the, um, value in doing that?
It commits funds, so we have it and the board knows that in the future, we're going to be incurring funds for buses, let's just use buses, cause we know we're gonna probably have to buy buses in a few years. So by putting it in, you know that you've committed, we're gonna spend money. If you don't, you may just say, oh geez, hey, we got all this money, we, oh yeah, we can, we can do that, oh yeah, we can do that. Now all of a sudden it comes to the bus year and you don't have it.
It, it's just.
It's longer range. It's fraudulent than what we currently do.
That's true.
Yeah, and you know, I, I think, and that's part of the reason why financial goals, this is our financial goals discussion too.
Oh, so yeah, I kind of melded in there, sorry.
Basically, they're, but they're, but I think they go hand in hand because that's exactly it, is you wanna look at, you know, what is the replacement for a bus? Is it ten years, is it seven years? So reality is, we just bought a whole bunch of great brand new buses, well, we don't wanna have to replace those all at the same time. We need to get all our vehicles on a, I don't know, ten year, a rotation, we need to get those all on a rotation. You know, other entities do that, we need to do that too. Um, our roofs, you know, we're, we've basically got every roof replaced now, I believe, but there's other, you know, and curriculum is a really good example. You know, everyone is on, you know, every seven years, we do that. And so I think it's important, that's why I wanted to have this discussion, is, so we're looking more than this year and next year. We're looking for years ago.
No, it's actually kind of my question is, what, what other things besides buses are on a replacement schedule, I mean, technology.
And that's.
Technology needs to be, that totally needs to be.
And that would be another. Cause we have our, we have these, these Chromebooks, you know, technically, I think that when you, when you purchase it, they say it's a five year.
Yeah, well, I mean, at the county, I have it on a three year replacement schedule.
Yeah.
And, and because.
We need to stretch things out a little bit.
Yeah, we do stretch things out.
For our rental.
So we're over.
At least, at least I have.
But, but you have servers and you have network gear and those things all have replacement schedules, well, should, and they, you know.
I don't know if we have that, do we even have that?
At least and I open it up.
You're, so we're looking at.
Yeah, we're working on.
At least something a list of the facilities for this next year and then spread it out.
But furnaces and HVACs, other TWC systems.
Uh, some of those also fall into, uh, the long-term facilities.
Sure.
Like the roofs, probably.
Uh, roofs, but, but the way we set that up as well is we can, it's like a savings account, get put in. We, we put a hundred thousand dollars for roof, we're not putting in a roof, but it's designated for roof, so we're not gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars. Next year that carries over, it's still there. So we could carry over a hundred thousand dollars for three years, now all of a sudden we have three hundred thousand dollars, we can do the roof. Instead of the other way around where we do the roof and then.
Go off and pay.
We, we take a hit and then we reduce a program, cause that's been, that has been unfortunately, the way we've done business. Is we've, and we haven't knocked wood, we haven't for several years, but that's what would happen. We'd have something and we'd have to pay for something and we'd say, okay, well, guess what, we have to reduce.
And so that, that's what we're looking at, is you know, for the board to really start thinking, do, do we wanna start building up a savings account for technology, for buses, for curriculum?
And what can we do with that money in the interim? I mean, can we, is that just sitting in like a low interest rate checking account or is that, can that be invested in some way?
So, so Steve Pumper, you know, most of you have met, um, he and I work on investments, um, we do some longer term, like five hundred and seventy pounds, we may take a chunk of money or we may take a chunk of three hundred thousand and find a good interest rate. And we recently did that with two different.
And we're trying to time those with when bond payments are due. So as a bond payment comes due, I know I've got a chunk of money sitting out there getting interest on to, to pay, and then when, when it becomes available, I turn around and use that money to pay the bond, you know, so we really, they do our cash flow, they look at our cash flow with us and try to do that, so. So just because we're assigning our fund balance, doesn't mean I have that cash on hand. That's the other thing, the fund balance is a point in time in June thirtieth, when it gets audited, this is how much assets your school district has, that doesn't necessarily mean that I have liquid, that's liquid in the bank that we can spend.
But if we're, if, after a couple of years, I mean, it will.
Right, which is what we're, what's, what Steve Pumper and I and PMA has been doing.
How liquid do we have to keep this money if it's, you know, just general fund money, we're assigning it, but that can be unassigned or whatever the terminology is? I mean, cannot get put into a CD or whatever sort of investment that is time bound? I mean, it doesn't have to remain like fully liquid where we could access it at any moment?
We've got six hundred thousand that's kind of more long-term that we recently.
We, we would balance it just to get that we balance it out, we know that we need X.
On June tenth.
You know, available all the time.
Right.
It also has another amount that if you can, if you assign it, now that's over here, that's on that region. It's still available for us to pass.
Okay.
Years ago. I remember in the eighties and nineties, school districts had enough money that they would go out for short term and you could budget based off the fact that you thought you were getting a hundred thousand dollars in interest. And you used to. Years ago.
Not anymore.
We don't have that luxury anymore.
I mean, millions of dollars would you have to have?
Yeah.
Very true, they, they were, they, they were, look at our budget, you know, we're spending seven million dollars. We have a million dollars, we threw a million dollars and didn't get a fair amount of interest back. And you did.
So did you have some specific things, you know, so we're coming up?
The, the specific things that I had were curriculum, buses, FF and E, technology. And we just discussed one now, do we wanna put, you know, something set aside for, you know, for that specific area of AP testing?
Yeah, and we have that.
Going on through athletics now too, that's what was.
Would you consider that curriculum in a way?
We could put that under, yeah, actually, yes.
Yeah.
They'll fall under them below.
You know, and we, we met our fund balance poli- policy goal. That policy, we can review and update and change. And so, um, that's the other part of this is, um, you know, thinking about, you know, seventeen was our, you know, what we decided, you know, that was our, and that's what we had set. Um, you know, it was a, a several multi-year thing and we went from eleven, twelve, you know, we ratcheted up and so now we're at that top. So we should probably look at it because it did have years in that.
It did, and that was this past twenty nineteen, was the last year, so.
Yep, was the last year, so we do need to update that.
And do you, that's where Bill's talking about.
Think about what you want, maybe we'll take action next year or next month, think about, do you want that to be three months? You know, I think originally when we first set it, it used to be a higher number and the board kept not meeting it, not meeting it, and so they finally said, okay, let's make a goal that is attainable.
That we can reach, that we can actually reach.
Because it used to be like forty-five days, I think, stuck in my mind, and days was very confusing to people, so that's when we started defining it in percentages, so. So I think that's something to keep in the back of your thoughts and give, maybe individually, if you wanna give us some direction and Bill and I could draft something up. The real one was for fiscal year nineteen was just to accept that, um, resolution to change current, you know, cause now that we've got more information on what happened with our hiring and what happened with our impact aid and what revenue we are getting in, I feel like that's much more accurate to do that fiscal year nineteen revision now, so.
And we do these revisions, I mean, you know, we do, we do this every year, we do a budget revision this time of year.
At least.
At least.
Yeah, so this is a normal thing that we do, so just so it's not out of the ordinary.
So actually, we should probably act on item eight point seven.
Bill, I've got a quick question about that.
Yes.
In particular about food service, cause that one, that comes up quite a bit and, you know, we need to spend more money there. I mean, what does that process look like in terms of, like, okay, we've got money we need to spend, like, what's our strategy?
It could be, it could be equipment, better food, we've had those, um, items, uh, we actually increased hours as well.
Sure.
Those are some of the expenses. Tough thing to tell you the truth, is we also get these things called commodities. So all of a sudden, we get five hundred pounds of ground beef. Now we don't need to go out and buy ground beef. You know, things a lot, we get, I can't remember how many pounds of frozen strawberries. So now we have all this food that we also need to use along with buying food. And so it's, there's a little bit of a balance there that, that comes into play. Uh, some of the things that we, we've been discussing, uh, would be to even like develop a salad bar. And then we put that out and obviously that would be some equipment and then we'd be looking at more consistent purchasing, cause we need fresh, fresh produce, fresh, so those are some of the strategies that we're looking at.
And then we don't have to increase fees too, we're not increasing the lunch.
We're not increasing our lunch fee either, the board makes, actually, every year we, that is one of the things we do typically in July, we look at the lunch fee. A lot of times we don't even break for it, cause we're not changing.
It's amazing how we're the size of the limit with the food services, I, um, I didn't go to the conference this year, but at the NSBA conference, they have all the, you know, the vendors and whatnot. And there are some schools that are doing like foods of the world or lots of really imaginative programming.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, this one's of particular interest to me, but just cause I'm personally. Yeah, I mean, it would be, this one's of particular interest to me, but just cause of personal interest in it, but it'd be great if we could like somehow develop like a philosophy or something around the food that would maybe help drive how we spend that money, you know, it's like, okay, we're, rather than just being like, well, you know, ping, 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 you know, to spend that money, but it would be great if we were, had some sort of, you know, focus on this is what we want our food to be, like more homemade, or, you know, healthier, or like more.
Organic.
More organic, like, or you need more like, we'll, we'll seasonal food if we can do it, or like somehow like capture a philosophy.
And we actually, everything you've just mentioned, we've been trying to do that, you, we have our school garden,
Yeah, okay.
if anything comes out of that, we're trying to use that.
Sure.
When you say healthier food, we have very strict guidelines, the way to follow, um, so when you talk about healthier food, we have healthy food.
I think that depends on the, your perspective.
Well, it's meeting all the guidelines, when you talk perspective, you're right, it's the federal guidelines though, so.
Yeah.
You know, they say, the only, I think it's wheat, high-grain breads, and sometimes won't even touch it.
Yeah, I mean, I've reviewed the bills for a few months now, so I know what we're buying for food, so I just, you know, there's.
But no, I, I see your point, and, yeah, it's definitely something we can start.
I don't know, that's, that's another, you know, something to tackle, but, you know, that might help us inform some of that spending in the future.
You weren't around twenty years ago, right?
Not yet.
Well, not in Silver Bay.
I was alive.
No, in Silver Bay.
Actually, I was, I was in, I was in.
Do you remember their cooks used to have?
Wednesdays were fantastic.
Best foods, and the community would come in and buy these burritos and all the cooking stuff.
They used to be, uh, yeah, they made everything, and a lot of it was made from scratch. Like I was saying, Wednesdays, you'd walk in the building, that was the best day of the week, because they made fresh bread, and teachers and people from the community.
I happen to be there, must be done on Wednesday.
Would come in and, and they'd buy lots of bread, they'd put it in order. Um, they used to make cinnamon rolls, homemade cinnamon rolls, and all that stuff, but things have changed, and guidelines have changed, and smart snacks, you know, we can't have bake sales technically.
The food pyramid has changed, like, so much has changed.
We can't have bake sales?
You can't bring anything stuff that's baked at home, yeah. All right, so can we do the budget revision, and then we can talk a little bit more about financial goals, if you wouldn't mind, and so, any other, um, so I need a motion to approve FY nineteen budget revision expenditures, eleven million revenue rate.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other questions for Lori?
It's always thank you for the time you put into this.
Yes.
Thank you for the.
I know it's your job, but thank you for the time you put into this, I mean.
It's a big part of your job.
Well, that's good.
Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. All right, so eight point eight, um, discuss, discuss financial goals.
Yeah, so we've, we've had a fair amount already.
Yes, and so, any other, um, thoughts that anyone has, or questions?
So, so, um, we kinda tou- touched on it, um, I think it's really important to understand where capital expenditures are, and, um, you know, maybe make sure that all of those things are on some sort of a schedule.
I have a cell file that I've shared with Tom and Dr. Crandall that have the list of all of them, and kind of like what year we're looking at doing things, and Lisa was gonna give me input. I have her list, but I don't have necessarily how much she thinks it's cost for technology, um, Tom, I went through vehicles yesterday, it's.
So we have a list, so we know what our targets would be in each of the areas, we can share that list with you, if you wanna see that detail, or just wanna see.
The county harbor radios.
Are on that list?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna assess that with you. Uh, just so you know, for a second, we just approached, uh, we just, we have a chance to DM. Again, F A O, who is it, or F C A, or who is it?
Completely become obsolete yet, but it's, it's a big expenditure.
It's coming, is it, is it?
Next couple of years.
Is it two thousand twenty, or?
Yeah, it's about two thousand bucks or a year, two to three thousand.
And then the year though, is two thousand twenty or two thousand twenty-one?
I don't think they've stated it exactly.
But we have to do it, cause we have to be able to communicate.
Do we get any credit for your plans?
You can sell them on eBay, there are a lot of them, they, they.
I mean, the, the radios are still fine, they just don't.
Right, we need to talk to the county.
Yes.
Right, well, the, the problem is, is that the Motorola doesn't support them anymore, that's, kinda becomes a problem, and so the whole state, the armor radio program, they, they gave grants to everybody, a lot of places where they rolled it out, and so people didn't have the initial investment. And then, like, everybody says, you know, when, when you make a change of that standard, it's gonna cost little entities, counties, fire departments, a lot of money, and so there's this kind of bigger conversation where other people haven't put that money away, they haven't saved for that money in their little fire departments, and so there's a lot of pressure on the state not to roll out something new, um, or give us grants again, so it's, it's political. It's not just about the technology, it's political. So they never give us an exact date, it's, goes back and forth, but it will come eventually.
We have a pot of money we need to. I like the idea of, and Lori, I do remember when I first started, that we did, it was like twenty-four or twenty-five percent was the goal for the fund balance, and I remember saying, we're just not gonna do it, so, but I, I think since we're there, we should try to stay there.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
I mean, we made it.
We did.
In record time.
Yahoo, we did great.
And it feels so much better this way.
Yeah, we're going the right direction.
We're done.
Yeah.
Maybe there should be a goal that's, that it doesn't drop below something.
Yeah, and that's, that's like, you know, to be able not to go current, current fund balance, or certain, you know, set a bar. Is it twenty percent, is it twenty-four percent, is it seventy percent, you can see on the chart.
I like twenty-five percent, cause we're so close.
But I do think we should set a low, low bar.
Yes.
You know, and we can set the bar, and then we can reset it, so as we're moving along, we can say not to go below seventeen percent, and if we continue to get healthier, we can.
Call a game of limbo or something?
Well, and, I mean, the thing is, it's not a static dollar amount when you're talking about a percentage, cause our, it's a percentage of our expenditures, and our expenditures inevitably are gonna go up.
Yes.
So, that twenty-five percent is gonna represent a higher dollar amount, you know?
Right.
So it's not like you've got, you know, whatever, one point five million right now, that's twenty-four percent, but if you just keep one point five million, that could end up going down, you know what I mean?
Right.
Cause our expenses are gonna go up.
Well, I'll just, I do not want to relive the nine percent.
I guess they have it down in four years.
We lost sleep over that one, I mean.
So, so as, in way of a financial goal, my value system would be that that a percent, that it, maybe we worked to increase the percentage of, um, what we commit to curriculum, or to program. And, you know, we've been spending a lot on, on building and infrastructure and buses, but, um, that we try to maybe adjust it so that, so that it, we support our teachers better, and there's better, you know, stuff in their classrooms for them, and maybe special ed or whatever, that we try to shift that balance to more.
Speak towards our values.
Yes.
Well, we should have our buildings and roofs now, I mean, we should sell.
Well, that's of course important, but.
It is, it is.
Without sound education happening within the building.
Right, I mean, now it's time to like, okay, now we can really focus on how we can best improve our program.
Well.
Well, some of that was from like bond money that was specifically rich, foremost projects, but.
Sure, but that dollar amount of curriculum, I mean, as long as I've been on the board, I feel like that number's been the same. That, what is it, seventy thousand or eighty thousand?
Eighty.
Eighty?
That's the one that I read up to.
Yeah, so it's been that way, so I agree with you, I mean, it seems that it's time to look at that and see now, do you, do you get the same for eighty thousand that you did five years ago? I don't know.
It's not.
I'm guessing no.
We're also purchasing differently now, because we're looking, you know, we're using, you guys just, we're not buying, yeah, exactly.
More than textbooks.
Yeah.
Buying a huge amount of textbooks.
But maybe there's other things, um, if we were to ask the teachers, you know.
You know, what tools that.
What tools are they missing?
But yeah, so we'll look at increasing the percentage of curriculum, technology, we're gonna, we'll continue to meet with Lisa, who meets with staff, and, um, we'll also, well, we do need to put something in for buses, cause we know that's gonna be coming down the road.
Yes.
And we'll look at that chart of Ms. Backland, Mr. Nelson, I've been working on, and we'll concur with the administrators.
It would be nice to know, um, from different departments, like in the sky's the limit situation, which of course no one ever really has, you know, what, what would they like to see for curriculum, and what, you know.
Well, we have our curriculum cycle, so for example, uh, social studies is up next.
And it seems like we have, whenever they've asked, we've within reason provided, but we did have the question, you know, do we really need everyone to have Chromebooks in their classroom, maybe it's a per-student thing, rather than, you know, a little feedback, but it seems we've provided whatever we.
So that cycle, does that mean, so the eighty thousand goes to like a different subject area each year, is that, is that how that works?
Yes.
Now, how many year cycle is that? Many years, seven?
Seven.
Yeah, okay.
And is a seven-year cycle adequate? If we discuss the concept of beefing up curriculum, for one teacher, who may not be the same teacher in seven years, to not have the option to request.
They can still request, you know, for example, if something's changed, where we needed new interventions in reading or math, those are kind of the high, high areas that we need to address, I concerns, and also there is, we need addressing.
Is that a pretty standard model, doing it cyclical like that? And that seems to work.
And seven years is a pretty standard.
Rather than getting it in just.
I've seen six, seven years, I've seen longer as well.
Yeah, rather than like a little bit every year for everybody, it works better.
Well, I think they give both.
They're, they do get a little bit of both, and good point, if you recall, when we did the math, they did the big purchase, but then they had these ongoing pieces, I, I can't remember, what was that, uh, was it license for a computer program or something, that, that then was every year, it was incurred, so when they purchased it, their ongoing price, uh, pieces to that.
I think they get, each teacher gets some, some level of budget to, whether they're using it for pencils, or whether they're using it for curriculum items, they have a.
Yeah, some of the elementary, they call them consumables, like word books.
Sure. Okay.
Any other thoughts from you, Lori, any other questions that you, okay?
And if any board members, something comes to mind, I'll pay you myself, or Lori, or both of us, uh, I don't know, I'll make sure we bring that forward.
What are, what are we gonna be looking at at this next meeting, just so we chew on this in the right way, you know, between now and then, are you gonna like say, okay, here's this, like vote on it, or like, what should we be doing?
Yeah, we recommend that we commit funds for, in, you know, Lori's world, it's codes. We may not say the code, but we'll say curriculum.
Okay.
We'll say, um, capital outlay, maybe even, I don't know if we'll get as specific as in transportation, or, you know, which of the buses. Uh, we'd have something for technology, uh, curriculum would handle curriculum as you can in general terms, but also looking at A P testing. Uh, we look at, you know, those are the main areas, uh, that are off the top of my head, but we do have that list, and so we may have some other pieces for outside, uh, projects.
Are you gonna bring in a fund balance policy?
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
That's gonna be part of that, okay, all right.
Um, if we were down the road to, our, our teachers want to expand their curricula, outdoor education, we own property.
Have outdoor classrooms.
But if we want to expand, if they needed picnic tables, if they needed a pavilion, if we needed more trails, if we needed, I don't know what they would need, where, what funding do those?
Almost everything comes out in general.
So there would be, they wouldn't have to have that be part of their curriculum?
That would be something that sounds like, kind of, we haul up the size of my one-time deal, yeah.
We now have a shop teacher.
Well, and there's other also funding sources for things like that.
Yeah.
I mean, there is other, many other entities that we could go and ask for.
Our teachers are very, very good.
Grants and things.
Going after them.
Yep.
We're gonna bring you a plan, we're looking at, like, when you mentioned outdoors, there's probably the one right over here. Just don't know when it's gonna be built, but we have the funds, or we've got, actually, you approved the grant tonight, so, or accepted for an outdoor learning center, or a spot location, kind of a roofed area.
Um, have we had an opportunity to speak with, um, Chris Rowsey about, uh, what his students might be, he, how they might be able to help build things?
Yes, yep, and he's, he's been building.
Are you keeping it a secret, or will you tell us about it?
There's a project they're doing now.
Mr. Rowsey is currently in his first year back.
Yes, I understand that, I've had long conversations.
So he is very willing, but we're in the process. So there are numerous ideas, but nothing that we are moving forward in at this moment, as he's getting to know the kids and what their skill set is, and he's not to the point yet where he can say, you four over there, go build a wall without him. So he's getting to know those kids, and there'll be a lot more movement next year, but yes, all of those kind of things. Chris used to build houses with kids at Proctor, sell the house, and have a self-sustaining program. Lots of good ideas, it's just, he's getting to know all of his equipment right now, and the equipment he needs, and the equipment he could get rid of, and how he could best make that shop work, so. He's very happy with the facility.
Well, I think that might be a conversation, I know it'll be a conversation the board will have to have, if, if down the road, we have a shop class who we might want to duplicate, or have some sort of a project similar to what Proctor has had three years, where the students build a house.
That would actually probably come from administration to the board for a couple.
And then, and then they sell it, and, and Chris said that that program was self-sustaining, although they actually made money, and that money went back into the program, and in that situation, the land was, I mean, it's a full, I mean, has real ownership, it's not something on other land, so I'm all for it, whenever he's ready.
So I was like, he has helped all our classrooms, um, they did some projects for eats, and he built the frames, the shadow boxes for them. You know, he is definitely involved of all aspects of the school, if you ask him to do something, he usually doesn't say no, he's willing to help out, don't tell him I said that, though, cause that never gets done, but he, he is very, very generous with his time and efforts there.
That's kinda your walk of those classes, gets kids doing some great things, and lots of different things.
He's been here before, I've seen him in action.
All right, any other, um, thoughts, but as Dr. Crandall mentioned, if, if you have, if you have some after the meeting, feel free to send him and Lori, you know, and then we'll talk about this again, um, and look at this and at our April meeting. All right, nine point zero personnel, nine point one, to approve the resignation of culinary arts teacher Jason Ash.
Uh, there's a note in your packet, uh, he was with us for, let's say, five years?
That would be insane.
Yeah, he's grown a program.
We, and we build them a brand-new facility and all these new, and then he leaves. He's a hardened anta, please.
I think it's important to thank him for his services.
Oh, I'm really so grateful he was here. What are we gonna do now?
Open position.
We're gonna hire a new culinary instructor.
Right, right.
Fix it to the next place.
Yeah, Jason is already helping us recruit.
See, and look what offend, look at the people we're gonna attract with having this beautiful facility, so think about that. So, I think this is an opportunity for somebody to come on in and really fly with our facility and the program, and like he mentioned. You know, it's, he feels like it's, you know, it's time for somebody to come in and kinda take it to that next level, and so, I appreciate him being super honest about everything, it's great, and thank him for being here for five years.
And he has done, I mean, he's done a fine job, and all the time he's here. And he has done, I mean, he's done quite a job and all the time he's here.
And so I need a motion.
So with regret, I make a motion to approve the resignation of our culinary arts teacher.
With regret, I second.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. All right, ten point zero administrative reports, ten point one principals report highlight item.
Well, I have to, sorry, um, I wasn't here at the last meeting because I was at my MASPa Institute, which is the Minnesota Elementary Principals Association, um, training. So I went to lots of different sessions, reconnected with many of my principal friends that I have met along the road, and it was just very valuable. And I want you guys to know how much I appreciate you guys, um, allowing me to attend that. Lots of mental health talk, that is, is a huge topic across the state with elementary principals at this time. Great keynote speaker, his name is Ted, or no, Todd Messaloni, if you look him up, um, he is a principal down in Texas, and he has done really great things with his, uh, school down there. So, just some insight. Um, also, common ground and seeds of change. Seeds of, Seeds of Change was our elementary. It was a beautiful day for them. Uh, they were out in our school forest with fires, um, five campfires around, and they made bannock, cooked their own bannock, ate their bannock. Volunteers like crazy, um, no injuries, it was glorious going out there, you know, I always worry fire unless it's a kiss. But it was wonderful, it was wonderful. Um, we had a keynote speaker that Ricky White, who is a, a good friend of mine and also, um, a great leader in the education world. And he actually popped into preschool for a little bit and gave them a little bit of a lesson, spont, you know, very spontaneous. Um, but then he went in and he led the keynote with our common ground, as our common ground summit keynote, and he captured their attention quickly. He started wrapping M and M, and that's how he captured their attention.
He got my attention.
Yep. And then he brought it around to teach them about the hand drum and how to respect that. And, you know, that's kind of that common ground that we need everybody to come to. And then he led a couple of their sessions and just kind of told his stories throughout the day, uh, to the students that were listening. Um, he used a lot of the best practices that come with it, with the turn and talk and talk to your neighbor, what, what do you think of this, and then giving feedback to everybody involved in the sessions. We also had a great, uh, activity at the end of the Common Ground Summit where the teachers and the students, teachers first modeling it for them for both middle school and high school, got in a circle, and if you ever got a lo- lower than a C, step out into the middle. You know, and for the kids to see that as teachers, I wasn't part of it, um, that that is real, we're human beings, you know. We understand the struggles that it's like in high school. Um, some of the, the questions got deeper, you know, do you know an alcoholic in your fam, or do you know an alcoholic or are you associated with one? And you know, the kids just responded like, okay, these are real people, it's not, I'm not on an island by myself, I can relate to some of those things. Then the kids got involved, um, those were a little bit lighter, but they want, they had the heavier ones for the teachers and, and staff, um, but the kids then joined in. And it was just so fun to see them all participate and look around and think, okay, I have this in common with my peer that I didn't know before. You know, so there was just that, that connectiveness for the kids. It was just, it was a great day. I would say there was one glitch that we had, um, somebody going off script and we addressed it and it won't happen next year. So we're looking at having more of a, a local impact on this topic. So I want you to know that we can gain some feedback from our students through a survey, and we have to address those things. There's gonna be glitches, and I, I don't ever anticipate, anticipate everything going smoothly, um, but I want you to know that we act on those quickly. And it was a, an administrative team and the leaders of that Common Ground Summit that we joined together and we made those decisions and, pretty straightforward. Um, the little, little kids, I shouldn't say little, but the fifth through, or kindergarten through fifth grade, they ended their day with, um, the Black Alliance storytelling. And it was just amazing, these kids were just so enthralled with them, watching them, and that was some of their favorite parts. Um, and then ended with the song that all of the elementary students learned. And Ruby Gulfstrand was the winner of the artwork that was representing the Seeds of Change, and we brought her up on stage. And I don't know if you guys have, are familiar with the book Wonder or the movie Wonder, at the end it says something about everybody deserves a, a standing ovation at some point in their life. And I brought that there with Ruby up on stage, and it was just such a magical moment for me to watch the kids just appreciate her so much. Um, I just stepped back and I let her enjoy her moment, you know, but it's important that we recognize those kids that go above and beyond and have that talent that's outside of the box, so. Any questions on that one? We have a lot of survey results that we are willing to share, um, and just know that we're moving forward for another great year next year.
Picture they use in their papers when they ask the kids to be a little goofy.
Yeah.
Just.
Talk about five or six and I'll say, hey goofy!
That was on the other side of the camera, so exactly.
And that was the one that gets in there.
Yeah.
I would love to see the survey results.
Okay, absolutely, yeah, okay. Would you like them in an email form or paper form?
Email is fine.
Okay, I'm pretty sure that I have that form.
Um, if you could send them to the board, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Just, uh, to, to the teachers and to you guys that I know that effort, that it takes to organize a day like that.
Hours and hours, really, really hard.
It's, it's really, really important and.
Yeah, I got to hear really that day and there were people running around. And things happened, it was impressive.
So thank you.
Okay, anything else? Then ten point two superintendent report.
Uh, so I've got my report, one, one highlight, and I've got a couple of things out. One is I went to the North Shore Storm Hockey Banquet, the boys hockey banquet. If you did not know, the captains for the North Shore team were our boys. It's kind of, I was surprised, actually, I sat down at the table, didn't know, all of a sudden I was, I was at the Cook County team.
Good choice.
Uh, they did a great job representing, you know, as, as the captains of the team, did a great job acknowledging all the kids on the team, and, um, it was a special one, uh, because the coach, who had been, you know, thirty plus years coaching hockey, they, they, um, you know, recognized him for his service as well. Proud moment, uh, knowing that our kids are, you know, leaders out there along North Shore. Uh, the last board meeting, we talked about an action item tracking, I'm gonna incorporate that into my report, so we'll have that. And then the other piece, uh, didn't get an item as far as a discussion by communication, so our communication team. Uh, just kind of a little bit, also, we're gonna forget, but, uh, we're in the process of constructing.
I'm sorry.
A new sound for everyone's phone to play. No, uh, we're in the process of constructing an app. And this app will, um, it'll have up-to-date information about what's going on in classrooms, sporting events, any kind of event that happens. And it will be a one-stop access for parents, so it's, um, it can be on your computer, it can be on your tablet, you can go on your phone. So for example, Mr. Door is sitting at a basketball game, or if he assigns someone, just you, you, you named the athletic event, he assigns someone. They can send him, hey, here's the score, he gets it, oh, and he just takes it and posts it and sorts it up. Um, same thing, Ms. Myers could go around and see something like, uh, the, you were just talking about, these kids were on the campfire, she could have taken the picture and then posted it, and now it's out. They have the opportunity then, or the option I should say, so if one, I'm, I'm gonna reference them a lot because they're the team who is going to get the information. They're gonna be the, um, approvers, I'll get right down to it. So a teacher can send something to either one of them, say, hey, get the, we should get this out, look at it. They can then send it out to everyone, they could just post it to the website, they could tweet it out, they could instant message it out, they could make sure it gets out on a text or an email or all of the above. So another feature will be for Ms. Pam in the morning, when I call her and say, hey, when I can have school, or if we're gonna have a late start, she can just go on the app and go click, click, done.
And then it just goes out.
That's the instant alert, so if the Shirley family says, we would like get a phone call, they'll get the phone call. If they want a text or if they want both, they'll get both. So that's how it's gonna be operated. Uh, the nice thing is that you can send and we can get instantaneous things, so you can go on there and you're gonna see, uh, so if something happened in the classroom, or a bunch of kids were doing a great thing outside, and Ms. Myers took a picture, she puts it up and she can get on, it'll go to our webpage. It'll be sent out to all the elementary parents, you, you, we can have different groups, better representatives, it can be very versatile. And it'll also be, uh, we saw it in action, you can go on and say, oh, I just wanted to know what the menu is, it's very, very user.
So is this a, just an app that we're finding, or is it just, and then you just personalize it?
It's, you know, all, uh, Mr. Door isn't heavily into it and I give it to Ms. Pam.
It, it is, it's our app, it's a, it's a school app, which takes the place of your website or whatever. However, we know that all the parents are on these all the time, they're not on those all the time. And so this is a way better interface, so I don't know if you ever got on our website on the, on your phone and tried to get to places.
It's very challenging.
That's, that's the only way I've got it.
It's, it's, it's really built for a computer right now.
It's very challenging.
This changes the whole interface and how to go through it, and, and I think that, um, through this process, I think Pam and I were the most skeptical. And I think we, we're in this meeting like, yeah, we'll go to this meeting, we're gonna, and I know Pam was kind of crabby, and I think I was too, you know, and then.
We've never seen each other on the train.
I worked on it a couple of years, like really bringing.
Pam's like, I'm gonna do this over?
Yeah.
And then after about a half an hour, we're looking at each other, and like, this could save us so much time. And then I think we said in another one, and then he showed Pam and I the seven different looks you can do, and you can personalize it, and then I think we were kind of like, okay, this makes a lot of sense.
So is the website too?
Yeah, every, everything, everything that Dr. Crandall talked about, about, you know, um, game scores, anything, will migrate to the website.
Think the parent, you know, a lot of parents wanna know, you know, like, we just got that picture from Mr. Lipton of the, uh, knowledge book, it would have been just up.
Does this information?
So you're not, you're not sending it to, right now, we have four or five different people that are posting and not everybody's, you know, it, we, we're, we have to give them permission to post. Yes, go ahead and post this. Where, right, with this, we will be able to have certain people that are in charge of posting, say for the elementary, the teachers, for.
Yeah, so, uh. Yeah, well, probably Ms. Myers will get the elementary, Mr. Door gets the secondary and athletics, and.
But even so, underneath that, we can just have a teacher doing it, so we're not always just responsible for okaying things that are posted.
Does this information go to the public also, or just the parents?
No.
Everybody who downloads the app.
Yeah, anyone who has the app and then it's on our website.
And it could maybe be sent, like, to the news media or?
Oh, yeah.
If then the news media downloads it.
Anybody in the country could get that app and have, just like you get Facebook app, I mean, yeah.
And it's a free app, it's a, it's a free app, it's not, you don't have to purchase the app.
But it sounded like, within your, the app, it's, I mean, I mean, cause then it's gonna post to our website, which is not the app. And he said, or it could send somebody an email, or it could tweet, or go to Facebook or something, so it integrates with those things?
It'll integrate with our campus system, so that information will go into this, so it, it's literally as good as, I'm a seventh grade parent. I wanna get the athletic scores and the middle school news, that's it, and then you can even get the push notifications on your phone for just those things. So yeah, it does build your website as well, so once it's on the app, it does immediately go on your website.
But would it go to like social media for, like specifically?
Only if we ask, and actually, when I say we, it's probably gonna be Ms. Pam and these two.
In which case the public would see that, you know, without having the app if they follow the Facebook page.
So Dan, I, I, I think to clarify, like, we were talking about a couple of different things there, because like our, right now, we have an instant alert system that everybody gets for school announcements. Well, that, that's built within our campus database where that call goes out to everybody. But there's also the option in there that we can pull just seventh grade parents out, and they'll just get that, just that.
Right.
And so it's, it's, so it's using our database a, as we allow it to use our data.
We can, you know, build it up so we know bus forty-seven, we can send a note out to bus forty-seven, hey, it's running late.
So does this require the website to be rebuilt to work with this app?
Correct. That's, that's all part of the.
So that's part of the package.
It's all part of it.
They do it.
And it was that, you know, our website is great, um, but it can be improved, and so there are experts at this, and then it's all connected. And like she said, it'll save us a lot of time, and that's a hot commodity, so.
Yeah, um, Floodwood was one that I, I knew about and I connected with the superintendent, I don't know if you got a chance to talk to their AD, but actually, I got back, like, this is, this is outstanding, we love it. And they've been using it for three years.
What's the name of the app?
It, well, the company is Apple G, right, or?
Aptogee.
Aptogee, Aptogee, and then we will be naming the app, our app, like Cook County Schools or however we wanna do it, or, you know, CC Vikings or however we wanna do it, and then, you know, we'll have that, and then that'll come out, then we'll release it in public and have them, we have to establish our own Apple Store.
Uh, we're hoping, uh, looking at May, is it May?
May.
Is that?
Great.
I know they're working, I have, Ms. Pam mentioned really the people behind it as far as getting it all set up, so they're talking possibly later, but mostly the.
Yay.
Great.
Wow, yeah. So this, so this, our communication, we had this group of, of community people that spent all these hours in trying to find this, and then Pam and doing the next step and trying to get all the components, and now this will do it all.
Accentuate even more. And faster.
What is the cost for doing this? Because there was a discussion, the re, the, that group's recommendation was to hire.
It's around four thousand a year.
How much?
Four.
Four thousand, was the higher of communications.
The first year is nine thousand, because we have to do all the setup, and then it's four, four to five thousand, depends.
So that's less than, and less than these.
Yeah, that's a pretty good deal.
Yeah, that's great.
I mean, it's.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, that's, it'll be exciting to see you.
I mean, it's like, the, the week length, it sounds like a really great thing, it's just a matter of pumping information into it, right?
Yes.
It's like what you make of it, which is awesome.
And the, the nice thing about it is, that it's not just, I'm looking at our principals, okay, you two go get information. They are basically, you can tell the staff, just get it to them.
That's great.
You know, you can tell the coaches, just get it to them, you're at the game, at the end of the game, submit, and he could get five people, so that you can score for that matter, and I was like, oh, okay, boom, done.
The, the other good thing is instead, because you've got a good website, reasonable website, a lot of content is already there.
Yeah, they're just, and Pam.
You don't have to, years ago, they had to create from scratch.
Yeah, that's, and that, that was a huge responsibility on interrupt the data, on our form, it's a, it's a big, great, content.
So it's exciting to see this moving forward in this direction, to get better communication.
Great. We'll look forward to that, something else. Any other, any, anything else from Crandall?
Uh, just, uh, once again, a reminder of April twenty-fifth, or April twenty-fourth.
And the week before that, there's a.
Fourth of August.
Yes, yes.
So that'd be a really reminder.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're meeting as a team.
We'll talk about who should bring what.
Exactly, and we do, uh, ride together up there, we pile into a vehicle and ride up there together, so we meet here, by, we leave by four o'clock.
I'll get you a vehicle request.
Please, please request a vehicle, so we can, and we just let everybody know, I carry, usually I was, that, that looks up there.
I'm a car sex person, so unless I drive, I would vomit.
Oh, yes, so the rest of us. Okay, the rest of us ride together.
You'll do. So if I ever ride with you, I recommend you come and ride.
All right.
So on the topic of these special meetings, it just dawned on me that I had sort of agreed to, uh, spearhead getting like a, some sort of a meeting done on the West End, probably at Merch Grove for this summer.
Or gauge interest in having.
Gauge interest, yeah.
Yes.
So, um, I'll keep, keep going with that.
Do that? Okay, um, the other thing I wanted to bring up, speaking of the action items, Dan did share with us an action item tracking sheet, um, that he had sent out on Merche Team.
Oh, I'm gonna incorporate that into my.
Yes, so my, my, I'm wondering, do we wanna use that though as a thing that we can have up here at a meeting? That he can plug things in there, just to make sure we don't miss something.
Like your backup, your secondary.
Oh, yeah, if it's a, if it's on, um.
If it's a, is it sheets?
It's a Google.
Yeah.
Sheets, then we'll just share with the group.
Yeah, and I believe that we did address every item of past action that I have. I, I went back through and Pam and I compared notes, and so, um, as far as, um, my perspective, we followed up on all the items from last time.
Hey, because most of the time I just go, Pam, what's her homework?
So I have my tracking sheet.
So, um, all right, any other? So, um, all right, any other last minute items before I need a motion to, anything else?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Better late than never. I apologize, I missed this back in, uh, February, was Minnesota School Board Recognition Week. And so this is just an appreciation, thank you for your good service on our board, and what you do, your leadership, and support for the students of Cook County.
Something to hang us on our fridge.
Oh, that's a little do.
All right, exactly.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor to adjourn at seven eighteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay, motion carries, and you're adjourned, thank you.